Five o'clock, uh, do I have a moment to, uh, Rico Dean meeting?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilwoman, you have the roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Boeing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boeing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. Okay, we are thank, uh, for our regular meeting, uh, Council members, as I mentioned to you on last night, that we will have a public hearing, and at this time, I'm gonna, uh, we've already called the, uh, meeting to order. Uh, I'm gonna ask everyone if they would, at this time, have a moment of silence for Councilman John Lewis and Dr. C.T. Vivis. Uh, we lost these two pillars and giants of the, uh, civil rights movement, uh, last week. So at this time, I'm gonna ask you if we would pause for a moment of silence in, on, uh, both of their dignity and respect. In honor of God's children, say, amen.
Thanks.
Amen. Oh, my, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, if you would be so kind to give us the, uh, clarification, please.
Yes, I would be right here, here on the phone, but Lord God, we just thank you that you're sovereign, that you're just, that you're fair. Lord God, that you're merciful and that you're kind. Lord God, we declare decree that you're great and greatness we pray. Lord God, we ask that you would be with us on this evening, let us rightly divide the word of truth, Lord God, that us who can, you assume to accomplish your will. Lord God, we decree that you may increase, Lord God, and we ask that you fill us with love and passion for mankind, with wisdom and insight for his day. And Lord God, we thank, there are things that go to the glory of your name, and Jesus, holy precious and righteous name, we pray, to me.
Amen. Thank you so much, uh, Councilwoman Jackson. Uh, we've already had the roll call. At this time, the concentrate of the month is alertness, unaware of what is taking place around me, so I could have the right response. At this time, Council members, you have before you the July twenty eighth agenda, um, are there any additions, deletions? If not, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the July twenty eighth meeting. Go move, sir, we have motion by Councilman Johnson, do we have a second? Uh, young blood, uh, I would ask Council members to be careful, because everybody, everyone else is muted. If you would, be, uh, with your background, be very, uh, aware that I'm here, so. A roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Boeing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boeing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. Okay, the regular agenda was, uh, voted on the passage naturally. Council members, uh, you have before you, uh, the consent agenda, we have ten items, and I know, Mr. Contrax, I'm gonna ask you if you if you would be so kind to bring up your contracts in your committee report, uh, when we stop getting consent agenda ready, uh, at the time, we're trying to go ahead on, um, move forward with the contracts, we didn't, um, we didn't have during that time. So I'm asking you, if you have a contract, just bring it up in your committee report, and let the council move forward to vote on it. Uh, we have, Mr. President, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. I would like to add to the consent agenda, um, approving public works and general services in the recreation department to be eligible to receive the temporary COVID nineteen pay.
Okay, to move forward for the pre-clearance, uh, submit the pre-clearance, am I correct, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Oh, I can't speak for him, he, that's, that's his item.
Okay, well, will you tell me?
Mr. President, that is correct, I do realize the program has already been completed for this role now, but I do think it would be, uh, deserving to include those, those departments and perhaps more, um, eligible to receive the temporary COVID nineteen pay as the public works, I mean, as the public safety and fire department, the police department and fire department has been, has been.
Recreation? Public works and recreation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the cemetery.
Uh, that comes on, um, public works, cemetery is a separate department, but it comes on the public works, so include the cemetery too, Mr. President. But I mean, cemetery need to be included, so that's all, it deal with deaths that's brought on by COVID nineteen, so let's include them as well.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, uh, we have lot, laminators now, uh, consent item number one is to accept RFT, ready for proposal, for grass cutting and maintenance in all cemetery, in all shade cemetery. Consent item number two, to approve three contractors to provide service at the cemetery department at nine fifty-five an hour. Consent item number three, to approve to the Nacahaba Road Liquor Store, last two licenses due to non-compliance of city ordinance. Consent item four is, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas brought this up on last night, and I went back today, and, uh, that code is leaning, I think we need to go ahead and address that matter. Uh, consent item number four is to approve, is to approve Alabama Power Company to replace the telegram for O.T.L. Tishna and Surf Street in the amount of twenty-two hundred dollars. Consent item number five, to approve public safety administration personnel supplementary, uh, paid in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars each. Consent item number six, to approve the MOU for Black Belt Technology in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine. As we talked last night, as we found that Delta Regional, uh, grant that has been on the books for, uh, about two years, that's seventy-five thousand dollars, and, uh, Mr. Green, who was part of the Black Belt Technology, uh, he performed the work, and I asked Attorney Madison, can we do a MOU, uh, to move forward with his payment? We still have roughly about forty thousand dollars left that I talked with Mr. Thompson to see, can we do an RFT to, uh, see who would finish up the other half. Uh, consent item number seven, to approve budget adjustment in excess of ten percent for the year in order to cover the purpose of vehicle in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars, uh, thirty-five face masks and seven air packs. Consent item number eight, to approve the move forward with the contract for the city personnel major in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Consent item number nine, to approve Russell's R one thirty-six nineteen twenty election process. Consent item number ten, uh, to approve seventy-five hundred for driving by the marinas to come for special project budget line item. We approved it at the last council meeting, but we're just, uh, moving, uh, moving it to the special project budget line item. We need to vote on, and consent item number eleven, uh, for temporary some merit paid for general service, recreation, and the cemetery department for the COVID nineteen, uh, COVID nineteen. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to place all, uh, lamin, laminations for consent agenda for approval. Mr. President?
I'm saying.
Hello, 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 Councilman Shaw?
Just Randolph, hello, I, I made, I made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman, um, Mr. President? Hello, 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 we're gonna open the first discussion. We have a motion on the floor by Councilman, uh, Shaw, second by Councilwoman Youngblood, open for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to move, I have a, uh, of the agenda for public discussion. Because I, I think, uh, all public work is, uh, ten to twelve hours per hour, and, uh, and we get that kid home at seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and it don't make no sense, you can't make no decent living on seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So I, I'd like to put it on for public discussion.
Okay, thanks to Councilman Randolph, okay, that makes it so, with ten items for the consent agenda, we have a motion on the floor by, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, which agenda is that you're correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have question.
Go ahead.
What you mean, uh, before my question, would you read number three and, not read three and five again, with President Green?
Yes, ma'am, number three is to approve to the Nacahaba Road Liquor Store, last two license due to non-compliance of the city ordinance. Consent item number five is to approve public safety administration personnel supplementary paid in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars each.
Okay, that's what I was talking about, okay, so, uh, okay, number seven, I'm, I'm complete, I'm confused at number seven, because I didn't hear, I don't believe I heard the fire chief ask for that last night, is he on the phone?
Uh, yes, ma'am, let me, let me unmute.
Did he ask, did, did you say, what, read that, did you say something about ten percent something? Would you read that again, please, number seven?
Oh, let me unmute the fire chief.
Okay, I'm new to him again, please read that again before he answers.
Chief, are you on now, Chief Brown?
Yes.
Okay, um, number seven, to approve budget adjustment in excess of ten percent for the year in order to cover the purpose of vehicles in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars with thirty-five face masks and seven air packs.
Okay, so, Chief, did you put that in all in the same breath last night, ten percent and twenty-two thousand?
No, I think, uh, President Green was saying in excess of ten percent.
For the year.
So what I was asking for was approval, we purchased this equipment, uh, that we need to have.
Okay, well, Mr. President, I would ask that we, uh, adjust number seven to, they include the, the amount we gave us last night, he gave us that amount last night, and it includes everything we said.
How, how much is that amount, Chief, do you recall?
Uh, it was approximately, oh, late ninety thousand for, for all of it.
Ninety thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
All right, ninety thousand dollars, what's worse, okay, open discussion, uh, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Shaw, second by Councilwoman Youngblood, in the fall of discussion.
Yes, and then finally, number nine, for the election process, uh, that be the, for the, uh, entire election process, is that the resolution, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am, resolution number one thirty-six nineteen twenty.
That's changed.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional questions, call for the vote. All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Boeing?
Yes, but everything except for number five, I'm gonna stay for, from number five.
Councilwoman Boeing?
Yes, for everything except for number two, I think that needs to be thought out a little longer.
So are you abstaining, or?
No, yes, everything except for number two, two would be no.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilwoman Jackson? Is she on the phone, Jack?
Councilwoman Jackson?
Oh.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, thank you for unmuting me, I've been.
Okay, I didn't mute you. Okay, I didn't mute, okay.
You just said you are unmuted, uh, so I'm looking to, uh, abstain on three, uh, abstain on eight, and I, I would like to ask one question of Councilwoman Benjamin, on five, has it, uh, have we had a pre-clearance on the public administration personnel? Public, for, uh, public, are you saying for public safety? Yes, ma'am, administration personnel supplementary paid. Okay, so, uh. Have they been pre-clear? Public safety is on the list, so it doesn't have to be pre-clear, it's on the list. Okay, so the administration is fine. Yes, so, oh, yes, on everything but number three and number eight, I'll say number four. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Benjamin? I, I, I want, uh, no, on number seven, I did not hear ninety thousand dollars on last night, on number seven. Uh, Mr. President, before I cast a vote on number seven, I'd like the chief to ask, to tell me if ninety thousand is different than the amount he gave on last night.
Chief, uh, chief?
Mr. President, Mr. President? Hello, chief, you, you gave me the sound last night, cause I have extra questions.
Okay, chief, ma'am.
My question is, I don't remember it, so I'm asking the chief and no one else, the amount he gave, and if, if that is what he said, I'm holding on it. So my question is, I don't remember it.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Mr. President, and what I asked for was to, uh, for forty-two thousand for that, uh, appearing vehicle, and I need to, uh, to take out a emergency response, and I also need to purchase about forty-seven thousand dollars worth of, um, air packs and face masks, so it's approximately forty-nine thousand, I'm, I'm sorry, it's approx, it's approximately eighty-nine to ninety thousand is what this one could cost, for making purchase those two different pieces of equipment there.
Okay, thank you so much, chief, because I don't want anybody else to hear from this, and I have for the chief, so my answer is yes, I'm voting for it.
So I do wanna make sure that, you know, that y'all understand that what I'm asking for is just a budget adjustment to take some money out of an account.
Yes, we got it.
To account to purchase that, and, and all, that equipment's gonna cost about ninety thousand dollars.
Right, thank you, chief. Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
I need some understanding, Mr. President, on that resolution for the election, do that include the two hundred dollars the Councilman Randolph suggested that we pay the election official?
Uh, no, I, I think Attorney Madison was researching that, am I correct, Attorney Madison?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's just for, uh, the individuals.
Okay, that, do Attorney Madison have information for us? On this subject?
Not, not yet, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm always here, some, um.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. All right, uh, the consent agenda passed. Council members, hopefully, uh, everyone has had the opportunity to approve the June ninth and June twenty-third minutes. At this time, are any corrections, deletions? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt, uh, both of them simultaneously, or do I have a motion on the floor? Does it, I still move, Mr. President, Graham, to adopt both of them together. Okay, we have motion on the floor to adopt both session minutes, that's June ninth and June twenty-third, and a motion by Councilman Johnson, do we have a second? Second, I have signed Councilwoman Boeing, in the fall of discussion? Fall of discussion. Roll call, Madam, uh, Madam Clerk.
President Boeing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boeing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Yes, Council. Councilwoman Dunn? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. Okay, uh, means we're approved, uh, unanimously. Uh, Council members, at this time, we have a public hearing, I'm Attorney, Attorney Madison, Attorney Madison.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, they even made the agenda, um, Mr. Harbison, that's who I, I focus on, I trust him all, can you check just to see for sure, Mr. President? Okay, I'm trying, I don't, I'm not scared, I'm, I'm media one, uh, I don't know that particular number, I will, I'm, I'm media one, I think. I got you, you have to, we'll identify him, is what you're saying, Mr. President? Okay, well, I, I, I trust that he's all, uh, Mr. Spencer, uh, I don't, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Spencer. Mr. Spencer's out there, and the reason I asked for, after his presence, is if there's something out of his state, you can, you can, uh, make whatever point you choose to, uh, my way of correcting the record, but Mr. Spencer has purchased property at, uh, McCloud, and, uh, McCloud. Oh, I asked you to watch your word, meet your phones. McCloud has to do a map, he's, that's correct, that's true, and he has a, a wall on his property, uh, the, uh, wall station, I believe it is McCloud, and it's, he's, he's had a hearing before the sort of adjustments seeking either a variance or, or a vacation of the city's right of way to the extent that it would not, uh, right of way would not encompass part of his property and that wall on his property. Uh, he sought the assistance of, at least one of that two, legal counsel, uh, one of whom I spoke with, uh, today, uh, I believe I spoke to both of them, uh, but only one of them today, and the purpose of the hearing is to determine whether or not the city council is of a, uh, of a mind as the only body that can authorize this, to vacate a portion of the property, I believe he asked for approximately six feet of the city right of way. He vacated to, so that the city's right of way would not encompass a part of his property to include that, that, uh, wall on his, on his property. Uh, the only consideration that I thought comes, we have two considerations that bear on the decision-making process tonight, the council, I believe. Uh, one is, uh, Council Section ninety-four, uh, which, uh, prohibits the giving of anything of value, property, money, uh, public property to a private entity, and that exception, uh, we've dealt with recently, would allow for economic or industrial development to take place, uh, but it involves, uh, the steps we took, uh, recently in another matter, uh, also being included, I'm not saying that's something council has to do, I just thought it was, uh, my legal obligation and, uh, professional and ethical responsibility to, to bring that to your attention, uh, the other concern is that the only possibility of a negative as far as the physical planning of property to vacation of city right of way to Mr. Spencer would be that if the city were to ever decide to widen that road, uh, there might be some difficulty in widening depending on why you would, how far you would widen, uh, but that's a matter that is in the future and only, and only to be determined, uh, if and when that were to actually happen. Uh, Mr. Spencer, uh, I think basically it's property ownership, and he deserves the right to own his own wall, well, the question then becomes, uh, did he buy the property with that, uh, in mind, what the council wants to do about what it would be made, that's all. Uh, and after that, at this point, I will open the floor to Mr. Spencer to make his own case.
Okay, also, go ahead, Mr. Spencer, then we're gonna follow it up and open it up, uh, anybody who's in favor of it, if you are in favor of it, or if you are opposing, if you would, come forward and, uh, state your name and your address, uh, Mr. Spencer.
Am I there, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, so basically, um, it's encroaching on our property since the easement was not there when Mr. Strickland built it, it was added in between there, between the times that he built in nineteen eighty-two and passed away in two thousand and sixty, was added without the knowledge of the estate. So in nineteen eighty-two, when he built the wall on the property, the easement did not exist, and the boundary lines on the survey shows that the easement did not exist. And the time that that easement was added and encroached on the property, which is actually being an asset to the property and being taxed through the property taxes as an ownership of the property. So with that in mind of easements as far as widening in the road, we already have a solid on one side, so what we did is we add, through legal counsel, they said that you own that land right out, and the encroachment of the variance was never given legitimately through the paper and through public knowledge, so they said that Mr. Strickland had the right to give that to the successors of the property, and that's what we're trying to do, because it goes on side of right. The wall was built prior to the encroachment of the variance, and that's all I have to say.
At this time, we're gonna open it up for the public, uh, anyone who's in favor of it, at this time, please come forward and, uh, state your name and address. Anyone in favor of it? Anyone in opposition, pardon, pardon, pardon the issue? Anyone in opposition? Okay, that calls the public hearing, council, which pleads of the council to move, move forward or, uh, deny?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Dunn?
Attorney Madison, what is your legal recommendations to the council, I know you're voting, um, just law and giving us various statements, but, uh, can you give me your, your legal opinion on how this matter should be handled? And it's, I don't really feel the law, what you repeated to us, say, I don't, I don't recall sending you a, a reason, so I would love to have your insight in the matter.
Well, my, my insight is that Mr. Spencer is saying that the, the property lines that we close on the cities, he's, when, uh, right away with the city, he's in the right of way, closed on the property line after, uh, uh, a certain point in time, uh, uh, that's a question of fact, and in a, uh, a legal, a judicial action, which is not with the public hearing, uh, would have to be determined by the trial effect, and I can't say whether or not that's.
You are muted, you can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
The council can make their decision either way, with Mr. Had, with the business, uh, uh, assertion, uh, uh, can, can afford some, some privilege. Can afford some privilege, some, can afford some privilege, or can refuse it, that, because the, the city has the right of domain, so, uh, that argument is probably one more of the equitable issue as opposed to a, a legal issue.
Correct, um, so maybe some more, um, words, some words, for, um, your legal, your insight, rather than your legal opinion, give me what you legally would come up to be, you know, like in the email, man, it's my legal opinion you that you make, to this, give us your legal opinion, you've read the law, you haven't been afforded, you know, we're not a great of the law, and this is my first time hearing of any encroachment, uh, and so generally, uh, or we need to delay it until we get further information, because you're trying one thing, and you're saying you don't know, you have to, have you researched what this, if you have to, I mean, I don't have no uh, issue lately, making a hard decision, and I don't know, and you have.
How hard, would, would that, would it be out of, out of, out of order that we just carry on to the next council meeting, and, um, when we gather all our facts? Uh, with the pleasure of the council.
That's what I would like for you to have the council.
Uh, I, I, I have no problem with it, Mr. President, I think, makes you there, saying, yeah, I thought we do need to move forward, just let it, uh, go to the next council meeting, do all the research, and then I'll try and look at it.
do all the research, and then I'll try and look into it, give us more insight on it, because it's new to me, I'm, I'm just hearing about this, and, uh, uh, and again, I'd be wanting to ride by and see what, what I've been talking about as well, you know, so, uh, I think we do need to, uh, kind of send it to the next council meeting.
Okay, so we'll carry it over to the next council meeting. All right, thank you. Uh, councilmen, you know, on last night, I brought you the, uh, AG's opinion, and I know Attorney Madison did speak on it on last night, about, uh, you know, was authorized to sign any contracts, uh, also I have on the call is, uh, Attorney Bobby Seagull, uh, who, uh, also, uh, approved to the AG's office for, at a, Attorney Seagull, are you on the line?
I, I am on the line.
Okay, uh, how you doing, sir?
I'm doing well, I think, oh.
Doing fine, okay, uh, go ahead, Attorney Seagull.
Well, uh, City Attorney Major Madison and I actually...
Good afternoon, we are, uh, running behind, I'm running behind, uh, Randy Williams, with you, uh, we're getting ready to, uh, bring to Selma City Council meeting, already in progress, they have already, uh, done the consent agenda, and they've done the approval for, uh, the actual council meetings, and the, uh, awesome tables, one of the items, we handed that item for the consent, and so that's where we are now, uh, and we now join the Selma, uh, City Council meeting, already in progress.
Okay, sorry about that, Attorney, uh, we broke, uh, uh, council meetings, uh, go ahead.
Okay, well, I was saying that City Attorney, uh, Major Madison, and I spoke about the opinion, I also spoke to the General Counsel for the Examiners of Public Accounts to make sure everyone was on the same page, I think everyone is on the same page, uh, the key question was whether, uh, the City Council's enacted ordinance, one seventy-seven dash seventeen slash eighteen, whether or not based on that ordinance, the City Council President, uh, could sign contracts for the city ultimately approved by the City Council when the mayor was absent or declined or failed to execute the contract. The answer to that question is on the first page of the opinion, and it says, except in cases in which the mayor has exclusive authority, uh, the City Council can, uh, through ordinance, direct the Council President to sign contracts that the mayor, uh, when the mayor's absent or declines or fails to sign. Y'all will recall that the Examiners of Public Accounts were concerned that that ordinance, uh, one seventy-seven dash seventeen slash eighteen, uh, the Examiners felt that that ordinance conflicted with the provision of the Alabama Code, eleven forty-three eighty-three, that said that the mayor shall execute all deeds and contracts. This opinion makes clear that that statute, when read together with another statute that's, uh, set out in the opinion, and I don't want to get into a lot of detail, but, uh, eleven forty-seven five, makes clear that the mayor's authority under the statute that the Examiners were concerned about was, is not exclusive, so that as a general matter, the council can designate someone else, in this case, the Council President, to sign contracts when the mayor declines or is unavailable, uh, to do so. The opinion goes on to say that there may be statutes with respect to certain kinds of contracts perhaps, or with respect to certain duties that the mayor has, that expressly give that responsibility solely to the mayor, and in those cases, where the mayor has, uh, exclusive responsibility, uh, uh, the council cannot designate someone, instead, the council would have to go to court to require, uh, the mayor to sign under those circumstances. The opinion gives an example of that, that opinion is that there's a statute that says the mayor has a duty once a year to appoint an independent public accountant, or to get the Examiners of Public Accounts to conduct an audit. That is, according to this opinion, uh, an express duty of the mayor, the mayor must do it, and if the mayor fails to do it, the City Council cannot, uh, direct someone else to do it, rather the, uh, City Council would have to go to court to require the mayor to do it. But overall, the general concern of the Examiners, uh, uh, was not well-founded, and that is a general matter, uh, for contracts where the, uh, mayor is not given exclusive authority by statute, it would take individual statutes on particular kinds of contracts, perhaps to give the mayor that exclusive authority, on other contracts, the City Council may, as it has done in the questioned ordinance, uh, give authority to the City Council President for someone else, uh, to sign those contracts. So those contracts that had been signed, uh, uh, by the Council President, uh, in my opinion, are valid contracts, uh, under this opinion.
Ms. President?
Hello? Anybody there?
Yeah, yeah, we're here, got solid, Mr. President. Okay, we may have lost, uh, Attorney Seagull, we may have lost Mr. President for just a moment, and in the case when we lose him, I, I take charge, so let me just do that. I was actually, uh, calling out his, because I had a question, so I'll take myself first.
Okay, do it, do it.
I see, you're back, okay, so, uh, Attorney Seagull, uh, am I understanding correctly, uh, I have two things, the first one, are you saying that the examiner, uh, that had some conflict or confusion, uh, their conflict or confusion is in conflict with the statute put together, uh, their questioning does not make sense, maybe?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that the Attorney General found that the examiner's concern was not in fact a concern, because although the statute that the Examiners, uh, felt conflicted with our ordinance seemed to conflict, if you looked at the literal language, but there was another statute that, uh, the Examiners did not look at, that may, uh, according to the Attorney General, uh, make clear that the mayor's authority, uh, to sign contracts generally is not an exclusive authority. So essentially, this opinion said that the Examiners expressed concern, uh, uh, relative to the, uh, to our ordinance being inconsistent with a particular statute was, was not actually a concern.
Okay, and so, to follow up that before my last little thing, so, should we be concerned about the examiner correcting that, or should we just leave that alone?
No, I, I'd just leave it alone, I, as I said, I spoke to the, uh, uh, the General Counsel for the Examiners, and just said, we want to make sure that if we go forward, I want to make sure that what I'm gonna tell the council is consistent with what your view is, because we don't want to run afoul of the Examiners, uh, as we follow what I believe this opinion says, and he said, and I think, uh, City Attorney Madison, uh, agrees, I think we will all, uh, have a consensus about it, uh, you know, I'd ask City Attorney Madison to, to, uh, you know, correct me if I'm incorrect about us agreeing on it, I'm certain, we had a great conversation, uh, I believe Saturday, maybe Sunday, Saturday is Sunday, and, uh, I, I think, I think we, all three of the lawyers who discussed it agree on...
Okay, thank you, and then finally, um, when the, the duty of the mayor is exclusive to the mayor, I'm understanding you to say that we must get a judge, uh, to compel him to do his own job, and we cannot do it for him?
Uh, yes, and let, let me just say, uh, one thing, it, the, the opinion correctly makes a distinction between, uh, the mayor's obligation that is discretionary with the mayor, and those obligations that are not discretionary, they're called ministerial duties. Our position in requesting an opinion from the Attorney General, our opinion was that if the council has finally approved a contract, for example, the mayor's responsibility to sign the contract is not discretionary, the mayor can't say, well, the council's approved it, but we're just not gonna enter that contract, that's a ministerial duty. And so, if it is a ministerial duty, and we'd have to look at the particular statute involved, if there was a contention of exclusivity, if it is a non-discretionary obligation, then you could go to court and ask the court to direct the mayor to sign the contract.
Thank you so much.
Are, are you having a question for Attorney Seagull? Any other questions for Attorney Seagull? Any other questions for Attorney Seagull? All right, thank you, Attorney Seagull.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Uh, now to the announcements, Councilwoman James, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Okay, yes, um, I wanted to, uh, on, on last night, we talked about the, uh, possibility of a farmer's market in the area of, what, that, that, I was at the six and five, uh, and Councilman Stewart, uh, wanted, uh, some more clarification, and so I did see, um, our planning, uh, director, uh, Mr. Henry Thompson, so he can kind of, uh, briefly, he don't take a whole lot of time with their, for the question, briefly walked us through, we, we, we've been through this process for many years, and, uh, Henry Thompson is the one main person that was, uh, on this with me, uh, in addition to, John, we briefed it at one point, uh, we're given permission by the owner, and at that point, that owner, uh, that particular owner, one of the owners that passed away, and then it was almost like we were starting over but not ready, because you had, uh, different documentation and approval, so, uh, Henry Thompson, if you could explain a little bit about, uh, our little process, uh, since last night, we talked about last night.
Uh, greetings, City Council.
Greetings, Attorney Thompson.
Okay, uh, Ms. James is correct on, um, the fact that we have been working on this, uh, project, uh, she has been adamant in regards to, uh, pushing for this, uh, farmer's market over in the area that's in question, we have done numerous, uh, numerous amount of testing on the area, this includes statewide, being from ADM, all the way up to the EPA in regard to making sure that this area has been designated as clean, it also went through several separate tests outside of that, uh, to make sure and maintain that this area would be safe to place a farmer's market over there, and I think about maybe six to eight months ago, we called over and spoke with the EP regional person for our area in regards to that fact, and she kind of confirmed the same information as we had as well, in regards to that we would be safe in moving forward on, moving along with this project.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes?
Do, do we have, do we have any of that in writing, uh, my, my simple question was, have we been cleared by the EPA, and has the separate been answered, no, and if they answered yes, what documents that would validate the, uh, the, uh, ability of a farmer's market being established, so, are there any documents that I, are there documents that you could share with the council?
Yeah, we have, we have both environmental assessments done on the area as well, and, uh, ADM as well has a laid-out document where they have done even more extensive tests outside of our assessments, and the same here, uh, in regards to, so there is documentation on it, and I have a copy of both assessments that have been done on the area that's in question, and, um, we can get the document from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management this way.
Okay, can you, can you make a copy and just put it in our mailbox, Mr. Thompson?
Well, well, those two assessments are pretty large, they're about four hundred pages.
Wow, okay.
And, uh, they're really extensive, now, the letter that, uh, comes from ADM, we probably can get something, uh, from that director over there to, uh, deem it safe, but, uh, both of the environmentals, and I can print off the page that basically tells us, there was no, no finding.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson, are there any other questions for Mr. Thompson at this time? All right, thank you, per, Councilwoman James, any other announcements?
No, I'll do my public report, uh, as I always do later on.
Okay, any other announcements, are there any other council members about their respective wards? Any other announcements? Okay, to the mayor's support, Mayor Milton? Mayor Milton?
Go ahead, Councilman. I think, I think the mayor had sent us a good communication, I think, uh, I think we were right on plan with, uh, uh, giving him the okay to move forward with getting RLPs for the three cemeteries, uh, and thinking the consent of judge, that was, that was one of the, you know, so I think the man needed to be aware that the council is, uh, on top of his concern about the cemeteries, uh, and the council has agreed to look at the RLPs as to what these, the contracts would do with the cemetery, that they're making, uh, a proposal for, so, let's wait and see what, um, the contract's going to us, and we'll deal with it, and once we get RLP.
All right, thank you, sir, uh, Mr. Coles, are y'all? Mr. Coles? Mr. Coles? I know Mr. Coles said that he would be here, can we hear you? Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Coles, yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm here, hello, councilman.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
I, I didn't hear the question.
I think, we just want you to come in and give us an update, like you did last night, of some other questions that the council had, as it relates to the opening and closing of the graves, and who received the funding, the amount.
Yes, yes, uh, council members, the city of Selma receives the, uh, charges, the monies for the opening and closing of the graves, the confusion may arise from the fact that, uh, most of these charges are paid at the funeral home, and our department builds the funeral homes once a month for the charges that they've incurred, either in opening or closing or buying grave spaces, we, we send our bills once a month, uh, the funeral homes pay their bills, we take the funds and turn it into tax and license, we get the money receipted, and it's my understanding the monies go in the city general fund.
Okay, all right, any other questions for Mr. Coles at this time?
Mr. President? Yes, sir, I think the public needs to be made aware, you know, we talked about it in our work session, public needs to be made aware that we're moving quick, faster than a hurry to, um, give Mr. Coles the manpower, the... give Mr. Coles the manpower that he so richly deserved, to make sure that the weekend at Chor will not be interrupted. Uh, I think Mr. Coles, uh, expressed to us that the three men will give him, uh, the minimum manpower that is needed, that the, uh, seals, uh, will not be able to be interrupted simply because they have the manpower shortage.
Yes, ma'am, I, I, yes, sir, I think we rectify that for the consent agenda by allowing three additional workers, their contract at nine seventy-five a hour. So we are moving forward to address that, that, that concern that was in the commu- that clarify, that clarity for our community about not being able to help theaters on Saturday. I think we have-
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilman, uh, I mean, Councilman Randolph?
So, uh, Chor is gonna continue to be on Saturday?
Yes, sir, it will be.
So, is Chor wants to get this room for this Saturday, or would they be able to have it true?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Reverend.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Mr. Coles?
Thank you, council member, for approving those, uh, additional people cards. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Senator. You, Senator?
Yes, Justice. For sure. I think Mr. Coles needs to be made aware that I, that I have proposed that the cemetery department be included in the temporary payment for COVID nineteen. And of course, I had, uh, uh, put not only at the cemetery department, but the, but the recreation and public works services. Those three departments need to be included in the temporary payment for COVID nineteen. So, Mr. Coles, I want you to know that I requested the council to consider that and go away if you will, we go.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, sir. Hey, Mr. President? Councilman Schor, I mean, Councilman Randolph? Are you still there, Randolph?
Mr. Coles?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want you to be aware that I recommended that all you men, I tell you, make at least ten dollars an hour, and get the men on their seven twenty-five thing that they can beat some living. Because that seven twenty-five is a joke, and I, and I don't like that. Men's been working out years and years of seven twenty-five. We need to do, uh, better than that to our, uh, employees.
Yes, sir, I, I'll, I'll pass that on. Thank you very much. Can you hear me, Councilman?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Mr. President?
Go ahead, Council.
I agree one hundred and fifty percent with my colleague, Councilman Randolph. I think this is something that we can take up, up in our budgetary hearing. I think this is something that, that we need to be, uh, focused on, uh, because we have talked about it multiple times and not have. But I think talking about it without any real action on it is all for naught. Well, I would suggest that during the budgetary hearing, Mr. Randolph, that we bring this subject up, not only for the cemetery department, but for all departments. Uh, ensure that they're making the livable wage.
Okay, at this, at, at this, at this motion, uh, at this junction, Councilman Schor, you want to go ahead and move forward? Uh, are there additional questions about the temporary, uh, supplementary pay for the public works, uh, recreation and, uh, cemetery, city hall, uh, real separately? I guess we're at the junction now that we can discuss and, uh, move forward with, with the vote. All right, any part of discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, good. Councilman Randolph, I thought I heard Councilman Schor, and-
Councilwoman Jackson.
Councilwoman Jackson, okay. Go ahead, Council. Councilman, uh, Randolph, she, she sure, being Councilwoman Jackson.
So I, I'm concerned about, can that finally be used, that COVID nineteen might have been used to pay, uh, public works and, and, uh, cemetery, because, from my understanding, you said, uh, public safety, you know? So, I'm not gonna break the law, if, if, if laws don't say that we can pay them out of that money.
Uh, my thing would be- Okay.
What's mine? Go ahead.
Okay, my thing would be just to move, if you're gonna vote, I guess we can move forward or just vote to move forward for the experience, to see what the outcome is.
I think, and that's all we asking, Mr. President, that, that's all we asking.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. All right, okay. All right, um, Councilman Schor, I think you was next. I, I've, I've asked it. Okay, thank you, sir. Council, Councilwoman Jackson?
Mr. Um, Secretary, Mr. Johnson, um, Randolph, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, well, Councilman Schor, uh, since you, um, checked in the calls for all three, we're gonna vote on each one of them separately, uh, do you, are you gonna put a motion on the floor for, uh-
Mr. President, I've ruled that all three be voted on simultaneously, and, and that is my motion.
Okay, this is your pro- thank you. We got you. This is just for free clearance, right?
Okay, I think the motion to be, can we, uh, the motion clear that this is for free clearance? Because I have no problem with all three being combined together for free clearance. Can we make the motion clear?
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilman Schor.
I thought the mo- I thought the motion was clear, Mr. President, that you-
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just arguing that-
You have stated in Saturday what we're trying to do. So what part of, what part of discussing my colleagues don't understand, I don't know. However, my motion is to exclude public works, jail services, recreation and cemetery for free clearance, signing out whether or not, whether the firm be eligible to receive temporary COVID nineteen pay.
Okay, I think, who, who, who seconded the motion was the Councilman, uh, Johnson? Okay, we, we're leaving for the discussion, okay? Any part of discussion now? I, roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Bowie?
Yes, free clearance.
Councilman Bowe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood? Councilwoman Youngblood?
Councilwoman?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
That's it, okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson? Yes, free clearance on. Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Schor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. Okay, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you, council members. Uh, maybe Attorney Madison, do you have anything else you would like to bring forth until tonight? Uh, it may be best you, just we can get the contract, time, and a timing matter for the consent agenda, maybe you could, uh, bring forth the contracts, and we can vote on them now upon your report, sir.
Uh, you do have the contract. You think they would not receive that time of matter?
Yes, I, I think they would receive them, uh, I received them, uh, roughly about, about four fifteen, quarter twenty. We're trying to put them on the consent agenda. If you, I, I, I get, I get it, I get it. And we talked about, about that earlier today, too. What, what happened was that was not all the information that I said was met with in terms of some things needed for all of us to get that, that one, that everyone contract on. But I, that should, all those contracts now should reflect, uh, the five things I pointed out that were crucial in every contract, for the body, for the scope of work, for the fund, that have been obligated, the amount of time, the funding source, and the term of the contract. Uh, there was four contracts drafted, uh, done that were, two for Councilwoman Jackson, uh, one for Councilwoman Benjamin, and one for Councilman Randolph, I believe. Uh, about the, uh, four contracts are for, uh-
And, and Councilwoman Thomas?
And, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Thomas, they're asking you, one, two, three, four, five contracts, that's where, that's where I went wrong. I thought, I thought it was four. We had to add that, that was my point. Uh, but the five contracts, uh, involve general cleaning, removal, I think in one case of, of trees and, and, uh, in, in the scope of work, basically, this for, uh, for cutting and cleaning and removal of, of, uh, degree of, of trees. Okay, can, can we just, please, can we just go ahead and move forward with the votes on? Because I don't have any further, uh, the, uh, the contracts to file.
Senator, Senator, Mr. President?
Hello?
The President, oh, yeah.
Mr. President, go ahead. Go ahead, I got it.
Okay, now I hear somebody voice me up. Okay, Mr. President, I would offer, uh, if all of us are using, and, and, and the number of the account number that I'm using is the number that specifically for work for, and the dollars that we're giving and allocating for work for, uh, your number should be in, your account number should be in with your work number, and then where my funds are coming from using snow cleaning service, uh, putting, uh, right away, uh, city lot, playground, park, uh, food out workforce, uh, east, workforce west. And so if all of us, uh, are using, uh, funds that are allocated to our wards and not coming from the general accounts, I would say we take them all together.
Okay, because I, I have, I have the signature, sir. Um, is that okay with the rest of the council members? Yes, I would, okay, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, I'm with your call.
Yes, sir. I'd like to use that, uh, the, the, obviously contract that the city attorney this past be, uh, uh, approved together as one, uh, our funds being allocated, uh, from those amounts that are allocated to the, the specific wards for each person, each council member.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor on Councilwoman Benjamin, do we have a second?
Second.
Backing Councilman Bowe, any part of discussion? On a move forward on the five contracts? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. Okay, the, uh, the contracts were approved unanimously. Council members, now we're down to committee reports and closing remarks. We're gonna start with Councilman Johnson, Recreation, uh, in the report, a closing remark. I'm, I'm, I'm a pro- Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is I, the head of the city clerk. I'm just wondering, uh, Mr. Madison, if you had that other contract that you were spoken to him about with respect to the clerk's office?
Oh, yes.
Was that one of the time?
Attorney Madison?
No.
No, no doubt, that contract is not identified on this Harris' condition.
Okay.
Uh, that's one of the contracts, that con- that contract is being drafted now and won't be ready for tomorrow morning. Okay, uh, will we be out of line, just go ahead and move forward with that contract? Uh, because that contract is gonna be needed with the, uh, voting process, the one that individual, and it's ours, and I know the, uh, Council seat vote, uh, start on tomorrow, and I know that, uh, it's gonna be here on day. So I expect, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a hundred dollars a day, and starting on tomorrow through the twenty-fifth, is there, am I correct?
Well, Mr. President, what I have, with the name of, the name of the individual, um, election duty in the city clerk's office, uh, add one hundred dollars per day beginning, uh, August the fourth through August the twenty-fifth, that's what I had in the text message from you.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that correct, Senator?
Yes, sir, I'll follow that.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion on the floor that we move forward with that contract? Uh, I'm gonna put the motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, go further. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, like, like, talking about Councilman Schor. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes. Okay, all right, let me go. All right, unanimous. Now to, uh, committee reports and closing remarks, Councilman Johnson, Recreation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh, I, I want to speak on one few things about the Recreation Department, and, uh, one of them is, uh, I wanna go back to, uh, two or three weeks ago, uh, to Councilman, or Councilman ago, uh, when Laura Jackson asked me to come support the council to talk about the, uh, zero turns, the thing that we need to be able to continue on to keep the paths that ain't clean and grasses so clean. But if you notice, the, the grass and stuff that's been built, I think Councilman Schor just got his car, uh, cut it up there, it was almost, uh, knee high. I'm saying, saying he's there, I just found it got cut, but that grass was just cut on a regular face, and all the paths when we had the zero turn. I asked Terry about the, the, the ones that were being repaired. I think we got out soon as possible, Mr. President, uh, uh, Gerald Harris, one of them. But anyway, they, they got one at the shop, and it's back in the shop, because it wasn't ever wrecked it, and what happened, that grass is still growing, it's getting farther closer high on some, uh, repair, I mean, some grass getting cut. So, but when they was having the, 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 the equipment for work with, they kept this, these paths looking nice, excepting, uh, on a regular face. So I'm hoping, praying that, uh, next week it have the, the, the zero turn completed, they're not falling across and, and trying to, hopefully, this council, they get some guys, they want zero turn, so we go ahead and try to keep these paths up to date like it should be, because they're really getting out of hand, because snakes is calling, I'm crawling everywhere, I've been called all over about snakes and this mess. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, I brought up, uh, uh, Attorney Madison, looking for, uh, film our football team, it's in the process to get her to have their football league, uh, started, uh, and, and the athletic director, uh, was calling about the statement whether the fans be able to come in, and I want, uh, Attorney Madison, uh, to talk about that. It's also about reopening the tennis court. So if, uh, Attorney Madison, you was on the line, you go ahead and, and, uh, and kind of bring that up the phone with, with the mayor mentioned to us what we need, what we need to do to move forward with it. Attorney Madison?
Uh, yes, I was taking, making some notes about the other thing, and taking my phone out, excuse me. Uh, you, you asked me to update a report on discussions with the mayor, mayor about opening the park, oh, I'm sorry, about, about, with all that, the tennis courts.
Yes, yes, the, 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 the regular answer, to hear what, what, what we want, Governor.
Uh, you see, we have not had efficient discussion, uh, uh, as of yet, and I can talk to the mayor, uh, about that, uh, in the morning, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, well, what I just want, that, what you had hinted to us on yesterday in the work session, I just want the, the view, uh, here what you had explained to us, uh, that the reason, the, all we were talking, the paths-
You, you want me to repeat what I said last night?
Right, I think I mentioned to you last night, yes, your mind.
Right, what I said last night was when the mayor was supposed, by me at the request, I think of, of you, Councilman Johnson, concerning the, uh, after discussions by the council of, of having, uh, football, hockey football resume at Black Park, uh, the, the, uh, statement was made, uh, both about, uh, what to do if the city, or the mayor would agree to, uh, the park being opened, uh, including, uh, ways preparations are, uh, or arrangements being made to deal with any social, just, you know, pandemic, and as well as, uh, the tennis courts, I'm concerned. The mayor said that he would be happy to take care of those things if the, uh, budget, uh, was, was, uh, approved, afforded on.
Okay, okay, that mean that we need more manpower to do what he to do, do, uh, make clearance for the, uh, certificate to come in, so keep the place, uh, clean and everything, so. Okay, well, I, I'll try to meet with the mayor and talk with him a bit more on that. And also, he said the tennis court, say that the tennis court, he did it, um, uh, he's not quite ready to open up yet, and, and-
He, 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 he's, right, he said, he said, that in respect to for the, uh, Black Park as a whole, and, and the tennis courts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. Counselor, if you have a question?
I do, um, I, I heard Councilman Johnson, uh, mentioned some, uh, a zero turn, and I think I heard him say we need- I think I heard him saying we need some more zero turn, uh, due to the kindness of Bush Hall, we were giving friends making new zero turn, so are we saying that we have enough people who are using those and, and they're working so hard that we need some new ones? Or are we saying we don't know where those zero turns are that were donated by Bush Hall, and therefore we need to buy some more on top of those because they're missing? What are we saying, Councilman Johnson, so I can be clear?
Okay, what I'm saying to Councilwoman Benjamin, that the Recreation, change, I mean, they got two zero turns down, and when I brought to you, you all back here, uh, to go, the, the, I understand it was, go ahead and get them repaired, okay, they in the shop now, getting repaired, so right now, I think they got a total of three zero turn and one Bush Hall, which I think the young man from the cemetery went to public work, and he don't want him operate, uh, the Bush Hall, so right now, that's why he left the cemetery. So, right now, we got three, uh, zero turns, I think, all together is working, and the public work is using them three. The city, uh, work, I mean, the, uh, Recreation Department workers, don't have anything, I guess, I, I'm not sure where they cut them, if they got anything, I know Jerry said that he got one out of the shop with the carburetor, but all they was been doing is backfiring and spitting, but they could put that back in the shop. So, I'm not sure if they rotating using, uh, the, uh, the zero turn that they got, I'm not really sure, but all I know, that, uh, public work is working overtime and, and three days of the week, to try to help get some of these paws caught up. I wonder why the paws weren't being cut, but I realized then, that, uh, the public work has to try to get the paws, you know, they doing overtime, uh, getting, getting done, paws and, and other areas cut, uh, they doing that so many days per week, uh, to give it done, with Terry and, and, uh, uh, Jer- Gerald was doing it as well, so right now, I guess they were in the long hole, but they were trying to get, uh, back to, uh, to try to get back out there, uh, but right now, uh, right now, we just need foot, I mean, we just need a football around, they'll do well, uh, and right now, we need, we need our own shop.
Now, but I had, I had checked with the treasurer, and on the P O there was one, there was only one submitted for repair, so I'm finding this inventory thing is vexing me. Every time we talk about inventory, it's what I think, ah, including, I, you know, I have, still have in the back of my mind, where is the excavator? And so, when I checked with the treasurer, there, on the P O, there was only one submitted for, uh, repair, uh, and so if, if plural, more than one was submitted for repair, then the treasurer is incorrect, and, and therefore, there is a zero turn somewhere that we don't know where it is, or a few zero turns somewhere that we don't know where they are.
Well, and last I talked, and we talked, and I think, uh, Miss Wade mentioned that there was, there was one replaced too, and then we, we voted to go ahead and get two, two repaired, where I stood the last time we talked about this. Now, whether two went to the shop, I don't know, I'm just going on the back, on the last time, and check the minutes, the minute stated that we were putting two zero turns in the shop, and we both all agreed to that, so now, if there's the one guy at the shop, he just don't have six hundred some dollars, and it's spitting it, it backfired, which had to take it and put it back in the shop, again, now, I'm not sure, and they, they, uh, I'm not sure the P O came in on that, uh, Miss Wade may be on the line, she can take out for that question, but all I'm saying.
Please, please, let her answer that question. Miss Wade, was there one two zero turn thought submitted for repair this week? She probably unmuted.
Hey, hey, Mr. President, while we waiting on Miss Wade to come on the line, uh, uh, Council, Councilman Johnson had mentioned, uh, that we don't have the manpower out there, uh, I know a while back, you know, we talking about, uh, uh, where the council talking about getting, uh, the city attorney, she go back to the mayor and try to hire some people back, so, so we'll gave him on that, uh, we still trying to get some of that, uh, workers back so we can get this stuff done.
Well, I, I, we do need, we need workers, I mean, really, we really need workers, and the worst way, I mean, 'cause we send these guys over here, we can hire other guys to come in, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, it's probably, you know, so.
Okay, let's go ahead and move forward to, I think.
Miss Wade, can we go back to, can we go back to Ms. Wade, I had to bring her in, she was speaking, but no one could hear her, so I had to bring her in on my phone, let's go back to that, Miss Wade?
Hi, um, good evening, Councilwoman.
Good evening.
Councilman, Councilman Johnson, you are correct, initial conversation, uh, Chair, uh, the director stated that there were two that needed to be repaired, two of the Bush Hall, uh, zero turns need to be repaired, however, I only received one purchase order for X mark, uh, zero turn being repaired, and I don't know if that's an off brand of Bush, Bush Hall, but that's the only purchase order I received from Recreation for repair for zero turn.
So, that, Miss Wade, you're saying that only one per, uh, there's a, a P O, that it's the only one, and you're not sure if it's even the one that came from Bush Hall because it's an off brand?
Yes.
And so, we still need inventory concerning all of these zero turns, whether they are broken or, or otherwise, we need them accounted for, we need to physically see where these zero turns are.
Okay, Councilwoman, I, I, I think we can expedite this, uh, Councilman Johnson, just have, uh, Mr. Jackson come before the council, and that way, we can get it from, uh, straight from him, right, right.
Mr. President?
Hello, hello, hello.
Mr. President?
So, hello, 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 hello. Go ahead. Hello, 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 Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Benjamin, do we have a question?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like the council to physically see all of the zero turns that was all donated to the city itself.
Okay.
And also, Mr. President, uh, public work have, I think, three zero turns themselves, three or four, now also, we, we can recall, zero turn got stolen from the public work out there on Water Avenue, and zero turn got stolen from out there to the complex of Sportsplex as well, now, whether they was Bush Hall, uh, 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 zero turn, I don't know, all we know that, uh, uh, they felt like what inside job was done, and some said wasn't, and also, we had police report was on it, now, no officer came before us to tell us what their finding was, all I know is, I'm not sure, would insurance cover that? Displaced them, I don't know, that.
We, we, they did a purpose call, they.
Well, what we can do is, go ahead, uh, 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 all I'm saying we can do is just go ahead on this, uh, Mr. Jackson come, and, and give us a story, and Councilman Johnson, 'cause we gonna be struggling with this conversation here.
Listen, President, I have one final point on that, so, just, just, before we move on, I have one final part because I noticed that Mrs. uh, has paperwork on the, the stolen, uh, more, like, like, after, Miss Ellison, do you still have that paperwork concerning that, y'all know that these public dealers have cameras, uh, Miss, Mrs. Ellison, do you still have the paperwork, uh, concerning the stolen more, or quote unquote, allegedly stolen more, or, do you still have the paperwork on that, Miss Ellison? Make sure she unmuted, uh, Miss Ellison.
Now, I think we're gonna move on, Mr. President, Mr. President, before you move on. Mr. President, while we're trying to get.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, could we have Miss Wade, school this recent inventory?
Hello?
I've said on the list, and then I go through that, uh, inventory list to identify what zero turn more's we have on hand, and, and we go from there.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Council?
Go ahead, Chair, um, Miss, Miss Ellison, then we'll move forward, we got to move forward, so, go ahead.
Uh, Councilwoman, I was trying to answer a question, Councilwoman, yes, I still have the paperwork on, uh, the board that was stolen, one was stolen from the city, and one of them belonged to the Dallas County Commission, and that was a brand new board that shunned and I have purchased, and it was stolen six days later, I do have the paperwork on that as well, and also, I do have a, uh, inventory list from all Captain's quickness and Recreation Department that I had before the layoff.
Okay, can you put that in our mail box, Miss Ellison?
I sure will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, ma'am, all right, Councilman Johnson, closing remark?
Uh, yes, well, now, let me finish, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, this where, this where I'm, I'm, I'm at, with this, Mr. President, so, if, if someone gone, they don't have nothing to work with, every time Recreation, uh, uh, public state become a, it always got to be a backlash, got something, they can't have a way, we constantly, can I say that?
Oh, hello, Councilor.
We constantly complaining about eye glass and contract and stuff, now, when these guys ask us to work with, we always got something to say about it, we can't have a way, but we go into all these contracts, and I help folks do the updates, and we can't get our home in from the work, I don't understand it, I don't understand it, it's somebody stole the stuff, put them in sale, we always wanna blame folk for something, if you know the fact that these folks are dealing illegally, stealing, or doing illegally, blame it forward, that's what they tell, but meanwhile, let's get these guys that they need to work with, it don't make no sense, it's really sad that you spending money everywhere we need to spend, and another thing, Charlie is old captain equipment, and let him through his part, he don't mind checking on some of this stuff, that's his job, and that's what he told us before, that's why I'm the chairman of captain equipment, so, like, Charlie is also his part looking to this as well, I would love to have, uh, and, uh, and, and, and I'll make sure that we have him there, even if you have to special call me, Mr. President, because we need equipment to get some done out here, it's sad, I can stack some thousand dollars contract and work out, and we can't spend a little bit to get power to put them to work with, it's sad, I can't.
Council, Council, Councilman, uh, are you Spanish, Councilman, uh?
Well, let me, my, all I'm saying, right now, I, I'm so grateful that we got our students, I got a spare plan, so go ahead, I'm gonna get your contract, I, I talked with Mr. Thomas, I, I told him what I need done, I'm gonna get the contractors done, some titles, uh, I talked with some rough before get some stuff done, so I'm finna go ahead and move forward, get a contract done to get water, and, and good night, and thank you, everybody, thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President?
Councilman Randolph? Councilman Randolph?
Yes, yes, I, I, I appreciate my colleague, Randy, recognizing me, um, so, I, I just really agree with, uh, Council, uh, Councilman Mousor, but inventory need to be done, you know, 'cause we got too much equipment that, that disappeared, you know, I'm not complaining, but, you know, it's tax sales equipment, and, and the maintenance and the upkeep on our equipment is terrible, you know, it seem like people just drive stuff, I seen a public work vehicle one day, uh, like I said, the brakes are screwed and so, it need brakes, and I said, I know the driver know it need brakes, 'cause he can hear it screw, but when he, he went to hit brakes, I just heard it just screwed, metal to metal, so, our upkeep on our vehicle got to change, you know, and, uh, uh, like I said, can you, um, give us, uh, the Recreation, and, and implement this, uh, uh, what kind, yeah, what kind of equipment we got out there?
Yes, sir, 'cause I think that's what we're paying you for, for.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not feeling so bad as to, none of that stuff, uh, you know, and I want the men to have the equipment that they need, but, you know, there gotta be a comfortable, public's with me, you know, and, and, and treat it like it's day on, same.
I don't understand.
Yes, okay, thank you, uh, Councilman Randolph, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood, in closing remark, committee report?
No report and no remark, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good night, thank you. Councilman Randolph, committee report, closing remark?
Well, I, I don't have no closure, uh, no committee report, but, uh, you know, I just want everybody to know that, uh, a lot of people that listen to me in Salem, I'm on military duty.
Yeah, they're making the movie, I heard.
Well, I don't know about making no movies, but, uh. COVID-19 is no joke out here in California, you know, and, uh, I just wanna say to all my friends, uh, all the citizens of Salem, please wear your mask and practice social distance, uh, 'cause I'm, I'm telling you, it is bad out here in California, uh, you know, people losing, uh, parents, losing their kids, you know, it's just bad, so I just wanna, you know, just tell people just be safe and, uh, and practice your safe distance, and please wash your hands, wash your hands, don't touch no stairwell, none of that stuff, 'cause, uh, COVID stay on, they're, I, I, I just longer, so be careful, uh, with your church and, you know, what door you open, you know, just gotta be careful, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Randolph, uh, Councilman Booley, administrative, closing remark?
No report and no closing remarks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Benjamin, committee report, closing remark?
Okay, I have the COVID report, so I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and give it, uh, so, today's report, uh, is a little extensive, so, today, Congresswoman Terry School, uh, reported at the seven dollar county town hall, uh, task force meeting on the day, they are working on a yet another relief package for families and small businesses, stay tuned for that, she, she will give an extensive report as soon as, they, they're on the floor now with the Senate, it's a Republican package, and so they are on the floor, going back and forth on that particular package, so stay tuned for that. The governor's office also reported that the governor will have a conference, uh, soon coming, as you all know, the mask, uh, mandate, uh, is about to expire, share attention that it will, it will continue, uh, from that, because, uh, while the numbers, uh, uh, are not steadily rising quickly, they are steadily rising, if you could say, I give you the Dallas County numbers in a second, so, Dallas County, if y'all remember that I reported, there were nine deaths, last time I reported, it wasn't long ago, there were nine deaths, deaths in Dallas County, uh, due to the coronavirus, and we were not in the harmful number in positive cases, so now we have one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one infected people in Dallas County, and the number has gone from nine to twenty-one deaths in Dallas County, it's a serious matter, it's a serio- twenty-one deaths in Dallas County from the number nine, so it's a, it's a serious matter, this is why the council members have mask standardized and disinfected, uh, if you need them, we're staying in contact with, and we also have central location, some of us are doing, uh, mask distribution in certain areas of the city, so it is indeed a serious matter. State Senator Malika Forty Eight reported with recover grant program, a grant program that they are launching, and they are inviting all elected officials July thirty first, it's nine AM for city and two PM for county, county commission, and so she will send that information because this, this week, you all, all city officials are invited at nine AM, and then at two AM, they're getting, uh, county commission vote, so that is the recoverable grant program, so that's grant money that does not have to be paid back, there's a grant website, and I'm gonna call it out because this call is being recorded, so, um, uh, somebody may miss this information, it's W W W dot C R F dot Alabama dot com, grant site where you can find tons of information concerning the state care act, okay, where it concerns Alabama, all things Alabama, Alabama Public Television is having a booth for children, if you have children, make sure you tune in to Alabama Public Television for those children who may not have access to, uh, the internet for one reason or the other, it's supposed to be supplied, but, hey, in some areas, they may not get it. August fifteenth is a town hall, it's announced by State Senator Malika Forty Eight at one PM, the state superintendent will be on that call for information from the state senator. The Alabama League of Municipalities also reported on the day, uh, they have a federal delegation call, and so there is a tremendous loss of revenue in the state of Alabama, and , uh, they are asking for thirty percent of the funding to go directly to communities, in the, in the communities, in these packages that are being talked about concerning relief, they are con- continuing to collect data on the revenue that's being lost in all of the cities of Alabama, so that is the Alabama League of Municipalities. Booth began soon, people go back to work, August fifth, there is a parent meeting on August tenth, and there's a partners meeting, if you are a stakeholder in education here, that's August eleven, look for that information for, from Superintendent Ayesha Williams, she'll give you more information. Um, Main Street and Rural Health Medical Program and, uh, the Health Department continue to test, they have plenty rapid tests, some people have reported fifteen minutes, and you have your results from Main Street with the rapid testing, they continue to test over on the side of the mall, Rural Health Medical Program. They continue to test over on the side of the mall, Rural Health Medical Program, they need to test. They continue to test on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Health Department. So, we have testing, testing, testing available in Dallas County, there is no excuse concerning testing. Uh, and then finally, we meet, uh, now, we were meeting weekly, we meet now, uh, every other week. Every two weeks, we meet for a Seminole County Town Hall meeting concerning COVID nineteen. If you haven't attended that meeting, make sure you do, I send the information out to, uh, the media, and we post it on social media as well, so. The call in information is always the same, and for the sections of recording, before I close out, I'll call that out now. So, the call in number is six oh five, four seven five, five nine five zero, and the exit code is zero four, zero eight, zero one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. President, yes, sir, Councilman Randolph.
Yeah, oh, oh, last night, I mentioned about, uh, two hundred dollars for the, uh, poll workers for the city, uh, um, I made a mistake, I was asking to give them, uh, uh, two hundred dollars increased due to the COVID, so that would have made it a total of three hundred dollars instead of two hundred dollars, because we was already making a hundred dollars. Also, uh, can we get Attorney Seagull, three hundred dollars, a big feasible, feasible, uh, for the poll workers?
Yes, sir, we did ask him over last night, Attorney Madison, you will, but you're looking, you're currently looking into that, that request, now, am I correct?
That's correct, Mr. President, and I did get the message, uh, Councilman Randolph about the, the adjustment that you made.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, Councilman Melissa, close your mouth and committee report.
I gave us for that, uh, 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 public works, when they got, when they got rid of the issue at the cemetery around July the twentieth, my first thought was to, uh, call a committee meeting to address it, but then as, as an effort, I thought this is something that the county council need to, uh, take home on, and of course, you agree, that's why we decided not to go forward to committee meeting, but to bring the concerns of the cemetery in, in our work session, and I'm counting that idea because things did that resolve. Uh, the garbage in our city is still a problem, it's not getting any better, and I don't see this council trying to deal with it. I think there are ways to make this council need to address this garbage situation in our city to make sure our citizens understand, truly understand that what they're doing is breaking the law. Not only that, colleagues, is creating a very serious health problem, and we need to deal with this garbage situation. There are many ways that we can do it, but we have to do it as a, as a council, not as an individual. The overgrowth, the mess, and the腐蚀ism of our city, that's just what it is. Some of the public work don't have the manpower, the all the equipment to do what they need to do. So, so it's a question, we have to depend upon contracting out, well, independent contractors. I think it's a waste of money, but nevertheless, it's something we have no choice what to do, we're all getting some assistance of what can be done in our respective wards. The city really needs to deal with this garbage, y'all, this garbage is a plague, and it's gonna create some serious problem. If y'all think we got a COVID nineteen problem, still garbage get out of hand, it's gonna be very devastating here in our city. Once again, this council need to deal with it. This COVID nineteen, in my closing remark, as Councilman Randolph said, it is devastating. I really don't think a lot of people really understand the magnitude of the stress that this disease and this virus is causing. It was alarming to hear my colleague, Benjamin, say that death toll now is twenty-one, just from now to twenty-one. So, it just stands to reason that COVID nineteen is still on the margin, it's still taking lives. Just do what you can to protect yourself and your families until there is that a, a, uh, it's true for this very deadly virus, I mean, this thing is just, it's getting out of hand, it really is, it's just getting out of hand now. And we don't do all, we need to do six ourselves, that we gonna be in that normal, this world up in a death toll area. He says, if you see something, say something, when you see crime being committed, you don't have to get in between the crap, in between the clothes, just identify who you are, make a phone call, you don't have to identify who you are, you see something, say something. And then, maybe we can have a real sense of, a decent livelihood in our community. Crime don't pay, good night.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Melissa, Councilwoman Jackson.
No committee report, I would, uh, just like to say, I'm so thankful for, um, Attorney Seagull, um, English Council for fortitude and tenacity, who showed fight of the resistance that we've received regarding contracts and trying to get work done in our, um, respective areas of the city. Um, to the citizen reward, three, uh, we're moving forward, we have several contracts, um, you should see the cleaning, uh, removal of trees in the, soon, a pot hole very soon, please continue to call me regarding respective areas that, um, have been overgrown and overlooked in alleys, and that we didn't, don't even regard the alleys anymore, we don't, um, realize that they're there because they have been taken care of us for long. Please, uh, let me know where we're gonna put that on the list and get these things done. Thank you for allowing me to start with you all, Councilwoman, good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, under my report on the public building, uh, committee, we, uh, number one, we have tried to get the, uh, city hall cleaned up, which we have not proceeded with that, uh, that, uh, also from the day to day operation where, uh, was last told us that, that would, we, it would have to be done on the administration, on the day to day operate to get the city hall cleaned up. But we do need to get it cleaned, like Councilwoman Shaw said, that we have to come together and go in there and do something that we need to do to, uh, make our city hall safe for our citizens to come in and, and to a clean building. And also, I wanna say this to the citizen reward chairman, that we were supposed to have a award meeting tomorrow on the phone, but I haven't got all of my information up, as soon as I get all of my information up, because our clerk has been real busy this week because of, uh, the election, and, uh, some of the things that I require, uh, she would have to pull up, and I haven't received all of my information out of finance, so I am going to proceed on this, uh, project that we had done on the corner of, uh, First Avenue and Wanton, the citizens are entitled to know how, uh, the funds were spent, so. Just give me time, uh, be patient with me, uh, we will have our award meeting, and I will give the full report once I get all the information up, and, uh, be blessed and have a good night.
All right, thanks, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, our next work session would be Monday, July tenth, and our next council meeting would be Tuesday, August eleventh at five o'clock. At this time, the children are taking a motion for a jury. Most of our councilmen will need second by. The show, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Melissa, all right, meeting adjourned. Good night.
Night.
Good night.